I want to order the August committee at six P M meeting. Public participation pertaining to agenda items. Here in time, we'll move on to the board appointment with T R A, Tidusville Redevelopment Authority, and I made my selection and council, I'd like to let you know that I chose Joe Thompson. Do you have an issue with that?
Sure.
He's been on there for four years, it's a five-year term.
He's presently serving, correct?
Yes, he's presently serving. You're good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to the Pitt Properties subdivision zoning variance update.
Just wanted to give you guys an update on where we're at with Pitt Property. We now own the Pitt Properties. That's all been finalized, they're in the city's name. The, as far as the subdivision, we have submitted all the paperwork and the hundred fifty dollar fee to Crawford County Planning to review that. Haven't heard back yet, probably will hear by our next meeting, I think their meeting's the twenty-sixth. May or may not have that for me for next meeting, if not, next work session, if that's the case. As far as the zoning, it went to our planning, they see no issues with us changing that zoning. So we are moving forward, everything just takes some time. We're probably gonna start preparing the bid package to go out so that we're ready when that, when we finally get all this stuff. In fact, we don't even have to have all this go out to bid, you know, I don't wanna put it off till winter, I'd like to get this thing going. So if you would, give us some consideration in the very near future of what kind of minimum bid we want to place on that. So when we go out, you know, we should put some kind of a minimum, any thoughts you have on that, just let me know.
Pitt did have a property appraised, just.
Yes, they did. And when they had it appraised, it was appraised as individual units, it wasn't appraised as one big property. So I literally have three appraisals that were done in January of twenty...year and a half ago.
So you're talking one row of townhouses, second row of townhouses, and all?
Right. However, we got to sell the two sets of townhouses together because of utilities, even though they haven't appraised in a minute.
I know one thing I could give you, even an idea of a minimum, I don't know that.
Of course, you know, we can set it, we can still, you know, we'll put it in there that we have the option to reject any and all bids, you know, if we're not happy with the bids, but I think we need some kind of a minimum bid, you know, we don't want people coming in and putting in a fifty thousand dollar bid, it's just not gonna do it.
Um, sorry, my brain's still on a road. The people that did the appraisal before, okay, do we have any idea if we ask them at whatever cost, to take and give us some kind of a guidance or direction on the minimum, or is that?
Oh, that's, that's in, that's all in there. If you'd like to see those appraisals, I have them in my office, you're welcome to have them and look them over. They're, they're thorough, very thorough.
But I think it was, what he's saying though, Larry, is, is could we ask them what a minimum, for a minimum bid would be?
I'm not a Realtor, okay? We're gonna have some Realtors in here, and if you're asking me to help set a minimum, I think we need to set something that's fair.
I can tell you, I did have them reviewed by a Realtor in Franklin. I had their, their appraisals reviewed, just to see if he felt that they were fair and, you know, were fairly accurate, and he said that he believed they absolutely were. So he has read them all over, I think I could get him to comment on that easier than these guys, these guys are out of Ohio somewhere.
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware of that.
I'm sure he would give me an opinion, I mean, he's, uh, basically what he does.
I agree with you, you're right.
I just don't wanna be a wild ass guess, you know, Steve's a French.
I mean, I can, I can tell you what the appraisals were, I mean, the, the one townhouse was one sixty, the other townhouse was one eighty, and Ball Hall was three forty. And probably the difference is, one of them has like the basement space, the other one doesn't.
So are we gonna put a minimum on each one?
Well, like I said, we've got to, we've got to do the townhouses together, because of utilities. One thing I am having looked at by an electrician, they had like one main meter for, for Ball Hall and the townhouses, but then they had sub-meters. So I need to know if there's anything I have to do to get those totally separated. So I'm working on that now, 'cause we wanna have that ready to go.
But those separate meters would be readable, right?
See, I don't know that, I just know that when I called Pendelec, they got one bill off of one meter. But they said that there was sub-meters. Now, why they weren't reading them that way, I have no idea, I haven't looked into, I haven't researched, to even look at the sub-meters, that they're not on the poll.
Well, when students and stuff in there, I, they weren't interested in all the individuals plus somebody who was really using the electricity in one.
It don't appear like it's gonna be a big deal, I just need to make sure that I can get Pendelec to give them separate bills to Ball Hall and the townhouses.
Or are you going to allow for a certain day and time for people to take a tour through that?
Yes, like a pre-bid tour.
Okay.
Yep, that'd be part of the bid package.
Okay. We're good?
Hey, I have one question, I had a truck out here. Did you say the Crawford County is, is going to look at this planning, or they have looked at it?
As far as the subdivision?
Yes.
The subdivision, Crawford County Planning, has the paperwork now and the fee, so they're supposed to have a meeting, I believe, on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And we should hear after that what their, you know, what their suggestions are.
Okay, thank you.
And then does that go to local?
Well, it usually does, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
What do you mean by that?
I didn't know if it had to go to the local planning.
Yes.
Yeah, you just get the planning after they're done, right?
Okay.
Um, no, not necessarily. We've already done it.
You already made the summary.
Yeah, but you're not meeting till next month.
Correct.
Okay.
No, okay. Okay. In any event, it's all, it's all in play, you know, we're moving everything forward, we, we definitely wanna get rid of those as well.
Okay, very good. The South Franklin Street access update.
I did talk to Pendot on a couple of occasions, and they finally got back to me yesterday, actually, with, and they, they said they, they don't wanna say that we can't do that because we literally could, but it would be very costly, and one of the reasons it would be costly is the, all the electrical stuff for the red light is out in that edge of that street, all would have to be moved. It's, uh, and I would now look at it, it does, it sticks right out into the street, it's not, I thought it was off the side, it's not. Uh, it would have to be remounted by Pendot, there would be a fee for that, so they said, you know, if you're really, if you're really intent on doing this, they would look into it farther, but it will be very expensive to do that.
And we pick up the price tag?
Yes. So I, he said, unless I hear from you, I'm gonna assume you don't wanna pursue this.
I think, if I may, um, at this time, I mean, if people have been used, used to doing this for several years, they've acclimated themselves to it, um, unless there's some really good reason to spend the money.
Oh, the other thing too is, we have to redo the A D A ramps over there, and that's an expense too.
So just to open that up, we're talking?
Thousands, mega thousands.
Hundred thousand?
Oh, I wouldn't think that much, but maybe like a whole eight million.
Well, you gotta, you gotta do all that.
Yeah. I, I agree, I don't, I don't think it's worth it, you know, I, I thought it was just another taken out of their cake, it's not.
There's more to it. Thank you for checking.
Yes, appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to new business, the request to address City Council, Mr. Scott Knowles.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. It's okay.
Mayor, I'm here to address Resolution thirteen, are you familiar with said resolution?
Uh, I'd have to look at it.
I have copies, may I approach?
You may, yes, thank you. Just to refresh my memory.
Indeed.
Is this from me here?
Yes, also, I'll be reaffirming to that, it's not attached.
That's okay.
To give the false impression that it's part of the document, it's separate.
Okay.
That's in reference to ordinance twenty-seventy-five.
Okay.
Which I'll be addressing. May I speak with the issue?
You may, absolutely, sure.
You wish to know it.
Sure.
And your copy of ordinance twenty-seventeen.
I am promoting with this.
Ordinance thirteen has amended on June twenty-fifth of our year twenty-nineteen, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I like, I wish to call your attention to page two, rules six. Now, I want to state for the record that I have handed Resolution thirteen in its entirety, unredacted, to the Mayor Esther Smith, City Manager Larry Menros, and to the current solicitor, Richard Wainpler.
Mm-hmm.
And let the record so reflect. Do you see the highlighted areas, Mayor?
I do.
Okay, again, I wanna reaffirm, I did not alter this in any way other than highlighted areas. I call your attention to Resolution thirteen, rule six, eight, Alpha, subheading, debate and the council action, are you at that point?
Mm-hmm.
First paragraph, first sentence, quote, "The public shall have the opportunity to address council," did I read that verbatim?
That is correct.
Thank you. Please keep that in mind as we move on to rule six of the Resolution thirteen as amended, B Bravo, subheading, quote, "Public participation pertaining to agenda items," unquote, did I read that verbatim?
That is correct.
Further, I'll call your attention to rule six, subsection B Bravo, first line, first paragraph, quote, "The public shall have an opportunity to address council," unquote, did I read that verbatim?
You did.
Thank you. Rule six, and please bear with me, rule six, subsection C Charter, public, quote, subheading, "Public participation pertaining to any topic," unquote, did I read that verbatim?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
In rule six, subsection C Charter, first sentence, first paragraph, quote, "City taxpayers shall have a second opportunity during the meeting to address council," unquote, did I read that verbatim?
Yes, you did.
Thank you. I expect, I respectfully request the definition of certain words, even though it may sound elementary, it is imperative to my foundation for my next proposal. May I have the definition as written in A Alpha, B Bravo, and part of C Charter of said rule? What is the definition of public?
And I would turn that over to Mr. Wainpler.
I would say what it's intended is what you have highlighted down in C, say taxpayers.
Can a person be a public without being a taxpayer?
For some purposes, yes.
Can a taxpayer, let's say the city of Titusville, it's implied, the city Titusville taxpayer is also a public, but not necessarily a public is a taxpayer, is that correct?
Correct.
Also further, in the Charter of Titusville, it is labeled as a third-class city, is that correct?
Correct.
And at which points, all ordinances established by law must be pertaining within that charter, in other words, it cannot go outside the charter of a third-class city, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Mayor, I now call your attention to the unattached item, it is highlighted and so marked by me with a green star.
Did you see that?
This is in reference to the general information of the Titusville City Ordinance twenty-seventy-five, are you familiar with that ordinance, Mayor?
I would have to read that to say I'm familiar with it, but I would say yes.
This may be a redacted or an abridged version, 'cause it was downloaded from the website.
Okay.
Uh, you wish con, to configure, uh, council?
Yes, I'd like to show them that.
Let the record reflect that the board members are now looking at my unattached.
I could look at theirs if you would like.
Sure, okay.
I could show you, okay. Okay.
May I address this solicitor, Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Wainpler, are you familiar with twenty-seventy-five?
Well, generally, but I have to read it to, I guess as you said, this appears to be a summary, somebody had from.
Indeed, it may be a abridged version, that is my interpretation.
Business licenses.
It's in reference to business licenses. Very well, Mayor, are you reading?
Yes.
May I continue?
You may.
Thank you. In reference to city ordinance twenty-seventeen, I would read verbatim, please follow me. Quote, "Titusville City Ordinance twenty-seventy-five states that every person desired to engage in business, trade, occupation, or merchandising operation within the corporation correction the corporate limits of City of Titusville. If the next year, correction again, next tax year shall pay the treasurer when due a business license of tax and a certificate of registration will be issued, the certificate of registration is not transferable." Did I read that verbatim, Mayor?
You did.
Besides the two exclusives, which I've corrected.
Mm-hmm.
Question about upon the board at this juncture, an individual who is not a resident, nor does he or she live in the city limit, yet he or she is paying a business tax as per described twenty-seventy-five of the city ordinance, is that individual a taxpayer?
I would say you're ta, they're a taxpayer, no?
I would say none.
Okay.
They're not, they've bought, uh, they've purchased a business license, but they haven't paid a tax, that's a fee, not a tax, I'm not sure why it says tax.
Okay.
But as it mandates for, uh, currently, twenty-seventy-five does say a business tax, yet in rules thirteen.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I don't know what ordinance twenty-seventy-five says without reading it.
Very well, I understand, we'll probably continue to the next meeting or the next work session.
Yes, mm-hmm.
I respectfully disagree, uh, so there, I, I apologize, but I must state that for the record. Again, the verbiage is very important, I am trying to ensure our rights as a business owner to address council on, on actions that may be detrimental to the economic situation to a said business. For example, I'll try to be quick, if you're taking out Diamond Street, which encompasses several businesses, and you have a plan to take care of one side, because Diamond's rather large, if you take care of one side, closest to Misties and Freedom and Cockamamie Realty, and you decide by, you know, you're gonna take out a construction there on a Wednesday, it'll be a due date period, and the other side will be Friday, Saturday, the businesses may have a special of some kind, you know, all can eat fish Friday and Wednesday, or whatever it may be, and they are asking, hey, can you switch it? And then they cannot address the council. Now, Mayor, we have an administration now that I find to be very open, and do, in fact, have sympathy for the plight of the business owner, and accept them as a tangible resource for this community. The word taxpayer, city taxpayers used, doesn't say residents, and to my knowledge, I have read this from page to page, and nowhere doesn't say residents. I respectfully request not any form of tangible rejection, but a summation to identify what is a taxpayer, and if this is a compound request, respectfully submitted. The first, I wish for these, i.e. public, taxpayer, and in the front page, in the preamble, citizen, am I correct so far of those verbiage? Thank you. I, my main goal here is to ensure the rights of local businesses to address council. Again, I reiterate, we have a member, a council, that is open to the plight and says, hey, sure, come on in, we understand, but every four years, and theoretically over two years, we have a mix-up, a change. This administration has shown a, you know, pretty good relations with the community, but we don't know if another administration will hold that morals. So there is a spirit of the law and the letter of the law. You by saying, yeah, any business owners come in, we, we understand, that's a spirit of the law, but when it comes down to a tort that can be generated, the tort would have to go by the letter of the law. For example, in reference to the construction I was referring to, they would want the other side tore up, and this is hypothetical, they would want the other side torn, because they want their business for two days, 'cause that's Wednesdays, that's where we have most of our business, because we have specials, and it's a simple request, switch off, but they cannot address the council. I wish for the Resolution thirteen, as amended, be amended to include business owners. I have, uh, rest and waiting for questions.
Counsel? You need some time to think about this, don't you?
Yeah, um, but we really need to, uh, to rely on, on Rich here, I mean, if you're splitting here definitions.
Mr. Wainpler?
Well, I would point out that the sunshine law requires that residents and taxpayers of the political subdivision have a chance to comment, uh, so I think that's what, some of these provisions go back many years, I think that's what it's intended to do.
The third party?
Yeah.
Your reference to the third party chapter, correct?
I'm referring to the sunshine law, which is what requires a public comment.
Correct, I, I'll.
I guess I would also say, I've been coming to council meetings for a long time, I don't recall a business owner ever being told they couldn't speak, just because they couldn't show they were a taxpayer.
Well, there's a misconception, may I address that?
Yes, sure.
I apologize, Mayor.
No, no, no.
I apologize. Um, Mr. Wainpler, with all due respect, because it hasn't happened, doesn't mean it won't, so I just want to ensure the rights of a business owner, those businesses out there aren't paying business taxes per twenty-seventy-five ordinance, but yet during the Resolution thirteen, I don't mean to repeat it, repetitive, I apologize, but in reference to Resolution thirteen, such as in, basically such as in C Charter, only does it say a taxpayer may address the council, a city taxpayer, quote-unquote. What is a taxpayer, a city taxpayer? A person pays a tax to a city, it's rather elementary, what does a business do? They pay a tax to the city.
But what tax does a business pay at the city?
It's not identified in the city, hence, it's moved.
You lost me there.
It's not identified in C Charter as a resident tax, it just says city tax.
It says a city taxpayer, so my question is, if you have a business owned by somebody who doesn't live in the city?
Correct.
Doesn't own the building, what tax does that business owner pay?
Business tax, for your permit, your license.
Well, that's a license, as far as I'm concerned, that's a license fee, not a tax, but that's, I think it's the answer that's floating here, I guess I'd ask, what is it you're proposing the council consider doing?
Uh, what is the situation, I, I'm asking for, I'm not sure what you're really trying to address here.
Yeah.
But again, to assure the rights of the business owner in the city of Titusville to address the council.
Okay, how are you proposing the council assure that?
We could do it just by a summation, like an added page, identifying the word "city taxpayer" to include, but not limit it to, and then when you define it, add correct business owners.
Right.
Can that be done?
Well, certainly, I think council can do that, I guess I would tell you that this council adopts a resolution, the next council appeals a resolution, adopts a ruling, so if you're looking for some kind of permanent assurance that no council will ever tell a business owner, you don't live in the city, you don't pay taxes to the city, we're not gonna allow you to speak, that won't do it.
Correct, but then once we establish precedents, that an ordinance was established to include business owners, for someone to remove it, you could prove some form of intent, and again, may result to a tort.
If you're a business, I'm not sure, a tort is a civil wrong, how does that apply here?
The tort is a civil wrong, because you're violating their civil rights, I'm talking in reference to the, okay, the first amendment grants the right for free speech, there's limitations to that, in reference time and place, you cannot yell "fire" in a theater, in this case, for you, for the council, to sit there and say you can't speak. It is implied that we can't have everybody running up, but there are rules to follow that you do not infringe on said rights. So for you, for, and, and it may result into civil litigation, which is a tort, a civil wrong. Okay, so in the federal level?
I, I guess I'm.
It really isn't, I don't think it's a, an issue at all.
One of the things I first wanna say here is, the reason our constitution has lasted as long as it has, is because there are things that you don't wanna get so doggone specific, you want to be able to have some leeways and opinions on the thing, so you can still address things. The minute that you have, and this is what's happened with so many other countries, and we learned this in government when we were children, is so specific types of constitutions typically fail. In my opinion, and this is my opinion, and I have thought this all out, if you are a citizen of the city of Titusville, you may not be a direct taxpayer, that could be somebody that is renting property from somebody else, you don't own a home that you pay property tax on, however, you may take and pay per capita tax, okay, which is, is less. I think the, the thing of having a city, a resident, or a citizen like that, that's what that was to drive in films. Businesses, if they're taxpayers, they are paying taxes, they are paying tax on, on the spot that their, their building is set on, and, and, yeah, not or, and, they also should be paying a business license fee. I think we've got those people addressed, I don't, at this point in time, understand why it needs to be more complicated.
Apparently, it's not addressed, what I'm understanding here.
Well.
Am I understanding that properly?
Well, I guess the current policy says city residents and taxpayers, so then the question is, who's a taxpayer? I guess we could sit here and debate all night whether a hundred dollar business license fee is simply a fee to get a license to operate the city, or if it's a tax. Uh, I guess that piece of it, if you say that's not a tax, it's a license fee, and that particular business, if they don't own the property or somehow, some other way pay tax, I guess they're not permitted to speak, at least by the policy, I think practice has been, if somebody wants to speak, they speak.
Yeah, I, Rich, to this point, uh, this started my brain, I may have skipped out, I think we get hung up on the word here, fee and tax, okay, because anybody that has a motel or anything around here, as well as a bed and breakfast, is required to take the heat of Crawford County bed tax.
Right, but they're not paying for the city, that would be.
Okay, but the city, if it ever wanted to, could employ a tax as such.
Uh, not on a hotel.
Not on a hotel, but there are other taxes, you've seen Allegheny County, they put Allegheny County has a tax on some of the baseball tickets that you get in Pittsburgh, and.
You have to be careful, Pittsburgh is a second-class city, they have special taxing powers of third-class city.
Okay, so.
But you're correct, there's a statute that says what municipal body can tax and not tax, and there are various.
And I guess what I.
And there was a business privilege tax.
And this may not be the right example, but I was just thinking that if somebody came and stayed in the city of Titusville, and they had to take and pay on their bill, that bed tax, which they have to pay, okay, that doesn't make them a city resident, doesn't make them a city taxpayer.
No, it does not.
Doesn't say, if I wanna go to California, to a city and get a business license and not do anything, you know, just pay a hundred dollar business license in the city, whatever city, I shouldn't have the right to show up in the city council meetings and demand change for something, you know what I mean? 'Cause you're not, you're not a resident.
I, I know what you, I know what you're getting at.
Well, I think the idea of the sunshine law is to who, a city or other municipal body has to allow to speak and, of a comment or a meeting, who has a stake in what? of a comment or a meeting, who has a stake in what's going on, and that's residents and taxpayers, they actually, is there money being spent by the city?
Now, we have to determine if a business license is a tax, basically.
Right, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. In reference to, now this is probably a redacted version, and maybe the original says some kind of fee. But under the redacted version, it says, clearly.
To me, a required fee is a tax, and maybe, again, generalities, I don't know.
In the third-class city code, there's one chapter that says tax, taxing power, or words to that effect. The next one says fees and permits. So the legislature made a distinction in the third-class city code between taxes and fees.
Mayor, with all due respect, you could table this
Yes.
for further investigation, and may I respectfully request an ordinance twenty seventy five, so we could table it and see which.
Yes, we do, I do want to.
I think this, this pendulum, I'm sorry, this is a legal type of thing, and we need advice on that.
I agree. Mr. Knowles, I guess I would like to ask one question, and that is, is there the perception that as a business out there, they cannot come?
Well, it's the general public, do you remember, Mayor, approximately a month ago, a gentleman from Cherry Tree tried to address the council in reference to the trash pickup, and felt that it was too much, and then the council explained to him that's more than that, they also pick up other things, and they do other things, do you guys, do you remember that now?
Yes.
Okay, there was an objection, and saying, wait a minute, he's not a taxpayer, or excuse me, he's not a resident. That's a verbiage he or she, that she used. And then, saying, okay, not a resident, and so I looked into the matter, and I did my due diligence. And the solicitor at this time, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, is suggesting that the letter of the law, a business owner who pays tax to the city, is not a city taxpayer. This is what I'm talking about semantics, indeed.
You've reached your conclusion by assuming
Hence, well.
your conclusion of your sentence.
Correct, I have assumption that a person who pays taxes to the city is a city taxpayer.
Well, I don't think anybody would argue with that, the argument is, if you pay a hundred dollar license fee, is that paying a tax or some sort of fee?
But it's prescribed by twenty seventy five ordinance, yeah, bridge.
But let's look at twenty seventy five, we're looking at somebody's summary, and I don't mind.
Very well, it took me two months to study this, so I can imagine it'll be.
Yeah, Rich, would you look into that for me, for us, please?
Sure.
Okay.
I just know that I couldn't walk up to Cherry Tree and speak on issues at their supervisor meeting unless I was allowed, and I asked for that time, okay? If it was something relevant, but for me to just talk about their trash pickup and stuff like that.
Well, I wouldn't think of doing that. I wouldn't go into another township that I wasn't, that I didn't have a business, or I didn't live and do that, but I'm thinking.
But, but, Tim, what we have right now is a lot of people overextending boundaries, which.
Yeah, Bill, you started to say something.
Okay, so, so, I, I'm sorry, in summation, as far as where you're coming from, it's purely hypothetical, you have no actual business owner that feels as though we can't come to council and speak?
District, they have in one form, because you guys established it, but only in the spirit of the law. You guys understand the plight and the economic benefits that businesses have for the city, hence, you have no criminal policy, am I correct, Mayor?
Yes, that is correct.
Hence, I want to ensure the rights, I like what you're doing, in reference to this matter, therefore, I want to extend it to the next administration, and any further administration. I do hate the words of the solicitor, saying that any ordinance can be modified. Upon the modification, no one can go in there with a crayon and just modify, and there's provenance involved, judicial. It's got to be adjudicated in some form of law. I want to ensure outright, as in licensed business owners within the city of Titusville, and as per twenty seventy five ordinance, pays taxes to the city, and therefore, either the definition of a city taxpayer shall include or should include, upon my opinion, business owners, that's all I'm asking. At this juncture, I'm asking for Resolution thirteen amended, to be amended, to include business owners currently. See, we, business owners pay taxes, and that money goes to where? Police, fire, correct? So we have an invested interest, and when the board makes a decision, they may counterreact that investment, the initial investment. Don't you think they should have some say? So, Mayor, what I'm trying to say is, I'm just trying to ensure this right under letter of the law and not spirit of the law, that it is pertaining race now. We have no idea what future administration we may have. And I apologize for being repetitive, but it's a, it's a issue pretty strong to my heart.
All right, we'll table that, and Mr. Winkler, you'll get back to council?
I will.
All righty, I thank you very much.
I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, well, moving on to the twenty twenty, that one, the municipal obligations for the city pensions.
Again, we have the figures for what our obligations are for the pensions. And I'll read you the amounts of the public employee awareness. The, what we are obligated to pay on our pensions for the fire pension is three hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Our obligation for twenty twenty for the police pension plan is four hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and thirty. And for the public works pension, we have to pay fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. So you can see, it's definitely a large figure, a large amount.
What's it up from last year?
Actually, not a lot, last year, the fire pension was three thirty-nine eighty-six, and like I say, this year is three thirty-one, two sixty-five. And the police, last year was four fifteen, nine thirty-eight, and this year is four nineteen, four thirty. So it's a few thousand dollars.
Four fifteen, nine twenty-eight, okay.
Yeah.
So, one I noticed on this lettering is that they're using twenty seventeen actuarial.
That's correct.
Was nineteen using seventeen or sixteen actuarial?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah, we could use it either, but the actuary, we don't have the, they don't have the study complete to put us into the nineteen.
Okay, I guess where I.
Which would be high.
What was circling around the back of my brain here is that in our meetings, and we've had propension and stuff, we've always talked about twenty seventeen, and that's a bad fiscal year for market value and stuff like that. So, are we still getting hit with that same year, or this improved?
Well, no, if we went with the newer one, it would, believe it or not, it would go up because they changed the life expectancy on the newer stuff, and there's many things that affect it, life expectancy was one. Now, I would think that by lowering the life expectancy, our obligation would go down, they told me that's just the opposite. They'd lower it, our obligation goes up, that makes no sense to me, but that's what they told me.
Bill, you've been thoughtful, is that just?
No, I guess I don't get that concept.
I don't get their concept either, and I, I plan to further have a conversation, like I say, it isn't affecting us this year, but I certainly want to have that conversation, I have not seen actual numbers yet, they don't have it prepared, but they were just telling me that they're probably going up because of that, that's one factor.
And as these figures, what does that do to our net?
Contribution.
Not contribution, I mean, I see this as our contribution, but.
Pension liability.
Yeah, what percentage are we at, is it?
This barely even covers the current retirees that get paid for the year.
We're basically not going in the hole anymore unless investments are bad, because we're covering the pension payouts, but barely.
The, the statistics are roughly. Okay.
So roughly, for the fires, you pay out roughly three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year.
At least, much higher.
At least it's four fifteen.
Well, we have a lot of retirees, I mean, we have twice as many retirees as we have workers, that's possible.
And we've had recent retirees in the last three years.
Oh, several, several.
Which adds to that, and then the actuary, the actuary starts planning.
Yes. Okay, comment? Well, all right, moving on to the Plinler subdivision request.
As you can see by the mapping of packet, that Mr. Plinler has purchased some property up on the hill up next, actually, it borders our water tank up there on Plymouth Street. And he wants to subdivide that, he feels that he can sell these parcels out for building properties, which definitely would be good for us far as the tax rules, if he, you know, if he does pull that off. But he's a timber guy, he's timbered some of this, or tends to timber some of it, but then he intends to, according to him, intends to sell these off as parcels for a building.
Now, is dash twenty-four, dash twenty-two already partialled out to anything, or is that the one that's going on right now? Is that the extension number on the end of those?
Can you read that?
I can't either.
It's so dark, it's too dark.
Are you looking at Y. and Y. B. going?
Yes.
That looks like that's part of the subdivision. There's a legend in there that says there, I guess there would be, some sold or the joint, they've got the stocks.
That's right, that's what I'm getting at, that right now is not part of their property, that is part of this.
Correct, that's part of the subdivision.
Okay, so, my question would be here, on any of this stuff, the city will not be involved in having to provide water, steel, or anything like that at our expenses, or anything to any of these, will they?
Well, if, if there was somebody built up there, yes. Because if they're in the city limits, we have to provide them, now, there may be costs to them, but we have to provide those services.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, are the services nearby, so?
Yes, yes. Our, our main water line coming out of the tank is right on the border of that property.
So it's not like we have to go through
No.
fields and fields and fields to take the service?
No, wouldn't be, wouldn't be that difficult.
Okay.
Rich, could you reiterate what you just mentioned about them, Paul, say, please?
No, they have, they call them, I mean, that funny thing that goes with.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sideways, the.
Yeah.
Oh, fair.
So, at this point, you figure you can sell them to these.
To the joint, yeah, that's what the, the recital, yeah.
That's why I was, the, and he probably has to commit already, in his mind, to subsidize.
Which is fine, these people get a bigger back air.
It's hard to read this.
It is very small.
Yeah, I can't, it's small for me.
But he purchased these from the authority, these were sectioned off in a plane years ago for development, and they decided to sell them off. So that's, that's where he purchased this.
Right, and he's still got some down below.
Well, there's about three redevelopment properties left, right, according to this, it's a small amount.
But he's not subdividing, you know, where, where a lot of these are just the backyards, those people are probably going to buy those from him. He bought those properties, but they don't need subdivided, they already been divided. So the only thing he has a question is the narrow strip that runs up next to the tank.
There's no easement issue or anything, we have, we still have access to getting to the tank and?
Oh, yeah, we have a road back to the tank. And, yeah, I told him if he wanted any, none access like that, he would have to come and make that presentation. Don't, don't think he will, I have forewarned him, there's a very big watering hole that runs right down through the middle of that access road. Don't think we're going to be giving that up.
Okay, any, no, okay, let's move on to the airport bid, the new fuel system.
Okay, just wanted to keep everybody up to date, the bids have gone out, we held a pre-bid meeting on August fourteenth. We had two suppliers show up to the pre-bid meeting, Councilman Frazier was at the meeting, went over the whole plans with them, and also the plans are available from the engineer. The bid opening will be on the twenty-seventh, which is our next meeting. That, the morning of that meeting, at ten a.m., they will be open, so I'm hoping to bring those on the agenda, so council can approve one of those bids to keep this project moving.
Good. Comment? No?
No.
Okay, let's move on to council bill number six of two thousand and nineteen, the non-uniform pension amendment.
Basically, this updates our non-uniform pension to all the new laws that have taken place since two thousand and twelve, I believe that's when it was last updated. So it just gets us in line with IRS laws, changes. I notice you have a whole copy of it, it's about covering a huge amount.
Okay, are there any questions regarding that? No? All righty. Okay, let's move on to public input, number, okay.
Hillary Emerson, on U.S. News. I'm curious, on the splash pad, do we have any type of attendance records, a daily average, or anything?
We, we have no way to track that, as we don't charge attendance, and it's just open every day from nine a.m. until eight p.m., seven days a week. Other than just drive by, it's, you know, if it's nice out, it's packed. Every day, you know, even on bad days, I've seen people in there, but it's just completely loaded with people on the nice days.
So, it's well-used?
Oh, it's well-used, well-used, and the nice thing is, when it's not being used, it automatically shuts itself down, so it's not running.
I have a couple more one, and they're doing a good job, that's a street sweeper, that thing will come down, and regardless which side I park my vehicle, that's the same takes. Now, I get out there sometimes, normal slow down while I remove my vehicle, but is there any rhyme or reason, or do we have any type of schedule or?
We used to have that, and since our last, our most recent public works director took over, he, he kind of did away with that, because he, he said they did a better job by just hitting the worst streets first. They, they still do, you know, the main ones first, there is a little bit of a schedule, but there's no printed map like we used to have.
The, one other thing I had now, the airport, we hired a manager, is that correct?
Yes.
And I was wondering if, I have looked on the websites, both airport and cities, but I have not seen the total compensation for salary and benefits, does anybody?
Well, he, first of all, he's part-time, he's twenty hours a week, he has no benefits. And he, he strictly makes twenty thousand a year, it's a salary position, twenty thousand a year, twenty hours a week.
That's, that's a new value, I guess, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Loretta. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Loretta. Loretta, would you mind coming up and doing a presentation?
She contacted me and asked me if she'd talk to City Council, and I'll let you talk. Uh, my name's Loretta Clipper. About four months ago, um, I was given a call late at night where a young child was wanting to, in their life, had contacted my child. I then got a contact with their parents to check on his child, and she was okay. Um, we have a problem in our community with bullying. We have it with adults. We have it with children. It's a district issue as well. Um, we have children that are encouraging other children to take their lives via social media, on the streets. We have organized fights. We have a group of kids that are considered gang kids that are videotaping these fights, putting them on social media. Um, I have been in a discussion with the school board. We've had a meeting where it was involved the chief of police, mayor, uh, board members, committee, the committee of teachers, and local pastors. Um, at first, it was kinda tabled. We went back, added August second, and we decided as a community, after with the school and the community, to bring in a speaker. Stand up for the silent. Stand for the silent was developed in two thousand and ten by Kirk Smalley. His son, um, due to bullying for two years, took his own life, shot himself in the head on his parents' floor. Um, he has spoke to over one million, five hundred kids. He's been into fifteen hundred different schools. There are chapters in forty-nine states and six countries. Uh, we do have a chapter currently here in Titusville. It's called Titusville, Pennsylvania, Standing for the Silent. It's for the adults, um, whose children have encountered this. And there's, well, it's a youth chapter, this Titusville, Pennsylvania, Youth, Stand for the Silent. I'm asking for support to stand behind young men. Um, we are working with a company association of a five oh one C three. Eventually, we will start going out for donations to bring, and it is quite costly. Um, I encourage y'all to get involved. When we have meetings, come to the meetings. Um, Esther is on the committee, so she'll know when these meetings come up. As of right now, the school board has decided that what we're gonna do is two presentations in the high school. We'll have one in the middle school, one in the elementary school, where we bring fourth and fifth from Titusville and Pleasantville into the school. And then we plan to do an evening community outreach where he will speak there as well. It's kind of a bystander program. You know, my daughter, she's involved in it. She's got a couple of kids linked with her. When they have problems, they support each other. If they see something going on, they step up and say, you know, we don't do that. Not in our world. We're not gonna have it. Um, so it's kinda helps based. I myself have tackled some stuff on the internet with adults. Some get it, some it takes a while, some don't at all. I've had dockets removed of people in this very room because it was creating chaos, bullying, people talking, you know. Um, it's an ongoing issue, and it's, it is bad in our district, and it is really bad in our community. You know, it's, it's, every day I'm getting something that somebody's been jumped. Where we've got kids going to court now for assault. There's two cases, right? There's already been one case I know of that went, that dealt with kids in school. There are two currently, the one before Amy Nichols here shortly. And it's just being jumped. It's fun. It's a game. It's, you know, and it doesn't stop there. We continue. We post it on social media, and it just gets bigger and bigger. So, that's what we're about. I, you can reach me through Facebook, it's the right folder, or Titusville, uh, Pennsylvania, Standing for the Silent. I'm always available. Um, I won't take too much time.
What I'll, what I will do, Council, is notify you, um, when the next meeting is, where and when, and hopefully, um, we can get involved in it, and I know we could maybe do a proclamation. I did tell the individuals at the last meeting that financially, we, I couldn't speak for Council, but I know our budget is very tight, but we can, um, I can at least proclaim that we're going to stand up against this. And I think that it would be good if we all got involved in that way.
I think so.
Loretta's doing a phenomenal job, um...
Uh, this, I, I'm a mother of six. My oldest is twenty-seven, my baby is ten. I have grandkids. My background is, is mental health and criminal justice. I'm a criminal, I am professional. I mean, there's a lot of rumors out there. I've been referred to as a man. I'm not.
You get the hint.
It always, it al, I've always been the main person of this. I do have somebody that, um, helps moderate page, Tracy Feeley. Um, it's never been anybody else but me. So, and I've always been, well, I'm twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
You can ask my husband, the phone rings, or it's Messenger, it's twenty-four seven, somebody's having an issue.
Well, I know, I thank you. I have two, two young kiddos.
It's bad.
It is bad. Now, how does the, how's this, um, the school board deal with it? Because I know bullying has been bad, and there has been little done with it on that end. But I know there's been new people coming in. That was years ago, so is it getting better, or are they, no?
It's, I think it, it's one of those things that we don't talk about. We don't talk about it, it doesn't exist.
Exactly.
And we'll say, when I first approached them, they were low reluctant.
Yes.
Um, you know, we have things in place, we have steps we need to take, and that's not working. With my own child, it's a revolving door. I had issues with her. I went to them, and then it gets bigger, so then you go to the police because now she's being physically threatened. And then they send you back to the school. So it's, it's a revolving door. It's gonna take everybody from law enforcement to the district, to the community leaders, to just people in general, say we're not gonna have it. Statistics say one in four children, by the time they reach high school, not only have thought about committing suicide, but would actually have a plan. That, that's not good. There's a child bullied every seven seconds.
And I will say, when Loretta contacted me, I didn't think it was a community or a council issue. And, but, and I told her, I said, I think you need to start with the school. And when we met there, like she said, I think we were all a little reluctant because we, we didn't really know what to expect. Um, the second meeting, I think, went very well, and I, I, I see a lot of progress taking place and, uh, a lot of great things.
On that second meeting, they brought in the principals from each school.
Yes.
So that kinda, you know, opened an eye.
And we had, and then we had a telephone conference with the gentleman that puts on these, um, uh, speak, he's a speaker. He's from Oklahoma.
Yes, Oregon State.
Mm-hmm. And I think it turned out very well, and we're looking forward to the next meeting. So what I'll do is I will keep you folks updated as soon as Loretta lets you know, and, and maybe more of us. I know you work, but Dawn, you're on, you're permanently on vacation, so get him involved.
Yeah.
So I'm teasing, Dawn. I know you're busy, so...
I do have a question.
Yes.
Do, do you know what the stats are from, say, twenty years ago? I mean, is this, I'm assuming this is getting much worse, but do we know that for a fact? And I'm assuming that social media is a big part of it getting worse. Uh, social media's become a terrible thing. So I just wondered, you know, because back when I was in school many, many years ago, there was kids that got bullied. I mean, and it just happens, and there was fights, and there was all the stuff you've mentioned. I just wondered if that's ramped up, and if so, by how much?
I don't know the exact statistics. I can give that for you. I do know that it has with social media, unfortunately. It's a twenty-four seven avenue to do this. People that sit behind that keyboard from morning till dawn and be the big keyboard warrior. And it happens. It happens. Kids got cell phones. You know, they sit across the street and say things to one another. Um, social media is a big, big impact on this.
Very close.
Yeah, unfortunately. I mean, you can monitor your kids as much as you want, but it happens. And, and a lot of kids, it's happening too. Unfortunately, kids that are bullied are not the first to come forth and say, this is happening to me. They hide it, because if they tell, then it makes it worse. It brings other people, okay, well, they're having a hard time, so I'm gonna poke them a little more. So it's things you see it in grades slipping, not wanting to be out with their friends, not wanting to go to the parks, you know. We put them security cameras in Robert's Grove. Why? I don't know. Because there's organized fights in there. There's bullying in there. I don't know who's monitoring that, but there's a problem still there.
Well, the problem is, even when we catch these kids, we can't prosecute them. That's where the problem is. We, we can catch them, and we can identify them, and they, you know, what's the punishment for a kid? Uh, slap on the wrist. Uh, then you go to the parents, and most of these kids, the parents couldn't care less. I, I know you know what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So that's why the, you know, the fine, they're not gonna pay. You can't get blood out of a riot. It's just a vicious circle.
It is. Uh, I know the one case with Amy Nichols, um, was with two girls in the middle of Main Street. And it ended up being a wash, but they were both told that if you ever back in here, it's an automatic three hundred dollar fine. Well, now that child's back in trouble here. So, you know, and whether the family has some money to pay it, again.
They also give them huge payment plans, which, which is a big issue. I mean, and our fair punishment is a thousand dollars, and they allow you to pay five dollars a month. That's just ridiculous.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, yeah, it's the whole system.
It is. It's, it's broke all the way around, and, and trying to get everybody on the same page to understand that this is not right. We as adults, we can't do this. We can't, we can't bully one another or say bad things to people because there's little faces watching.
Oh, absolutely.
They're learning. They're taking notes.
We're most of our own.
And then you wonder why these kids are running down the streets disrespectful, you know, fighting, bullying somebody, pushing somebody, carrying a knife, I'm gonna stab you. That was one today. Um, you wonder why, because they're examples. So we can't, I mean, it takes all of us, you know. It, it can't just be, well, it's just the kids, or it's just the district, or it's not a community issue. It's, Titusville's in bad shape right now, and our youth are, is suffering. We're, I've told district, and I'll say it here, we don't believe it, but when these kids start dropping, there ain't gonna be no need to talk about the trail, the park, the argue about the building being burnt down because there aren't gonna be any kids who've enjoyed it. We've been close. We've had two coming on an anniversary in September.
Mm-hmm.
We've had a teacher. We've had one two years ago that sat on life support in ICU for a month, luckily pulled through it. We have kids still haunting themselves. It's real. It's here. It's in this community. It's now, and it's working.
Loretta, thank you so much. Keep us posted.
Thank you.
You have any questions, Mr. Speaker?
I, I'd like to comment. I applaud you for your efforts. Um, uh, while I agree, it is a, a growing systemic problem in Titusville, we are not unique. I mean, as this points out, they've, they've got presence in forty-nine states.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's, it's, it's not a problem for the child's to, children to deal with. This is an overall societal systemic problem where unfortunately, we have adopted the culture of death. And, uh, I will stand behind you, Epsom.
I, I agree with you on that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-uh.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, um, if not, we're going to turn into an executive meeting, and we'll see you next week sometime.
Mayor, could you tell me what the executive meeting's for?
To govern personnel issue.
Thank you.